Thank you. I'd like to welcome everyone here to the open session of the Amory Board of Education, our regular meeting. And the first thing we have on the agenda is our Pledge of Allegiance. And our news team from Spotlight is going to lead us on that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And our Spotlight on Education is our news team from the Intermediate School.
Yeah, so I will introduce them. In the month of January, during my board report, I highlighted our news team here at the Intermediate School. So I invited them to come and share with you what they do each Friday. They put a lot of work and a lot of effort into broadcasting for us each and every Friday. And before they get started, I want to thank them for coming, and I want to thank Mrs. Brayton and Mr. Mylanarchak for all of the work that they do in supporting our kids in taking on this exciting task. All right, fifth graders. We're gonna start with a video, I think. Are you all ready, Andrew?
Good morning, welcome to the Warrior News. Today is Friday, September 30th. I am Aiden Sanchez.
I am Michaela Reeves. Welcome to the Warrior News.
Good morning, I am Tanner D. Ambrosio. Welcome to the Warrior News.
Good morning, I am Noah Melberg. Welcome to Warrior News.
I am Bentley Humble. Welcome to the Warrior News.
To the Warrior News. Today is Friday, November 11th.
Thank you for watching today.
Thank you for watching today. Please stand for the national anthem.
Hi, I'm Michaela Reeves.
I'm Tanner D. Ambrosio.
And I'm Noah Enzlin.
Thank you for letting us share with you about the Amory Intermediate School News Team. We are here to represent our team of 24 fifth grade students. The students working on News Team have a variety of strengths and skills. We learn from each other and enjoy sharing the great things about our peers, school, and community.
In the fall, students in fifth grade are given the chance to apply. Twenty-four students are selected and divided up into four teams. These teams are not organized by classrooms, so we get the opportunity to work with peers in other classes. Each team meets once every four weeks, and we have four days to produce a new show. Our jobs include coming up with ideas for the news, writing out the scripts, recording and editing. A fun fact is that the News Team has been around for more than 20 years, although when it started, although when it started, students worked with these.
These are our four teams, and we work with Mrs. Brayton and Mr. M. In the beginning, we have to learn all of the different jobs. Some of our members really enjoy being in front of the camera, and some would rather create behind the scenes. As we get more comfortable, we are encouraged to try new roles. Our goal is, by this time of the year, each team is to be student-led with Mrs. Brayton and Mr. M answering questions and helping with technology problems.
The news program is a great opportunity for fifth grade students to work in small groups. We work on listening to each other's ideas, being brave, trying new things, teaching others how to do things, and other skills as well. News Team is also great for our school community. Each week, we share things for our school and community. This allows us to include everyone and make people feel special.
This shows some of the things that we do each week. As a team, we look for things that are important to students in our school, and we share about them. Our peers want to be involved in clubs, teams, or events such as Dramaroma, sports, or the play, so we share about sign-ups and opportunities for students in third, fourth, and fifth grade. We share daily announcements as well as special announcements and recognitions. Every show ends with the National Anthem. This gives students the opportunity to honor our country and learn the words to the song.
Thank you again for letting us be here tonight. Do you have any questions for us?
Well, somebody should've told me to bring my Kleenex, because I'm over here in a heap, but I just can't, I, like, the production quality that you guys have, and to see all of the pictures of you guys all working together, some behind the scenes and some of you, and what a great opportunity that's being fostered there. You guys are just as professional as it comes for your age. I just can't believe it. I can't wait to look at the next newscast in 20 years and say, "I knew y'all went."
And just remember, someday, somebody's gonna be holding up what you're using and saying, "Remember, this is..."
Yeah, you'll be old one day.
Noah, it's a good way for you to collaborate together. Do you find your time constraints to get the story on, that kind of a challenge?
Sometimes it gets pretty rushed.
Yeah, yeah, you start talking faster. Good. Again, thank you so much.
Great job, you guys.
And, do we have something, anything else with powerlifting? Or was that? No. Okay. So then we'll go to our consent agenda items. Joe, you had those?
Yes, I went over the board vouchers today. So am I supposed to move?
You have to make a motion.
If they're all in order.
I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
Okay, and a second?
A second.
Char, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Okay. Next, community comments. I see we have several on here, so I will read the guidelines for the community comments. Welcome to this meeting of the School District of Amory Board of Education. We are pleased that you're interested in the work of the school board. You may address the board only during community comments time on a board meeting agenda. Any resident, district employee, or guest invited by the board may make comments about any decision, policy, or board meeting agenda items. The following guidelines have been established for addressing the Amory Board of Education. For those wishing to speak before the board, a sign-up sheet will be available prior to the start of the meeting. If the topic noted on the sign-up sheet is deemed to be out of order, the presiding board member will inform the person wishing to speak prior to the start of the meeting. Community comments must pertain to a board decision, policy, or board meeting agenda item. Common time is limited to five minutes per person. However, the time may be increased or decreased at the discretion of the presiding board member. Political speeches which are not materially related to board decisions, policies adopted by the board, or are not about a board meeting agenda item are strictly forbidden. Personal criticism of members of the board's education or employees of the school district are also strictly forbidden. Please stand to be recognized. After being recognized, state your name and your municipality where you live for the record. The board normally receives citizen input and does not respond or debate. If there is a need for an answer or response to a concern or issue, the district administrator or one of the other administrators will come back to you with a response. If your concern requires board action, it may be placed on the agenda of future board meetings. Okay? With that, we will start, uh, is it Kobe?
Kobe, sir.
Kobe Stinson? There you go. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kobe Stinson, and this is Carter Nielsen and Kylie Birch. And we are here on behalf of the Amory Powerlifting Team. We would like to extend an invitation to the school board and the rest of the Amory community to join us on February 27th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. for our First Annual Fundraising Meal at the Village Pizzeria. The cost is $15 a person, which can be purchased from any high school powerlifter, the high school office, or even the front door. We do also have tickets here with us if you are interested. Thank you.
And thank you.
Thanks, that was a very nice invitation.
All right, and next, is it? I can't hear, is it Clem? Is it?
Clem, yeah.
Clem Seven?
Dear school board members, I am Clementine, the foreign exchange student from France. I came during your last meeting one month ago to talk about graduation, and this is what I would like to talk about again tonight. But before starting anything, I would like to remind you something. I think all of you know that I am staying with Erin and Justin Hosking for the year, and Erin is also part of the school board, but she's not the reason why I'm here talking in front of you tonight. If I would have been hosted by any other families, I would also have been here in front of you, because graduation is important for me, and it has nothing to do with my host parents. That is why I would like you to dissociate Erin Hosking from me in this discussion. Now, as you know, because I am an exchange student, I don't get to participate in the graduation ceremony. I know that I don't meet all the requirements to obtain an American diploma, but I am not asking for this diploma. I think it is important to realize the difference between the diploma and the ceremony. The diploma is the achievement for the senior students. It is the reaching of all the work they put together since the beginning of their schooling. The ceremony, however, is only the event during which they receive the diploma, so it is not as significant as a diploma is. That is why, by the way, the state regulates the diploma and doesn't regulate the ceremony. Now, I heard of the letter that you school board members received about the policy on students and staff members who have died. In this policy, number 459, it is said, "The district will not recognize the death of a student or staff member in the graduation ceremony." I had no idea that this policy was in effect, and I agree with all the people who signed this letter to say that it is unfair, and that even if a student died, their name should be mentioned, and they should be recognized during the graduation ceremony. However, I don't think that students who died and foreign exchange students should be compared one to another. It would be like comparing driving a car and riding a bike. There are rules that you can't apply when you drive a car, but you can't apply when you ride a bike. Here, and in Europe also, the bike has the right of way. In France, a bike can take a nowhere street, but a car can't. So what I want to show you here is that I agree to say that it is unfair that the name of a student who have died are not mentioned during the graduation ceremony, but I also think that it is unfair to compare us, foreign exchange students, with suicide students. Because being an exchange student is not as easy as it seems. It is not easy to leave our family, our friends, our country in another home for nine months without going back home at all. When we come here, we don't know anything about your customs and your habits and the way you are living. We don't know anybody neither, and it can be really hard. I'm gonna take my own example here. So far, this experience has been for me the best experience of my life, but it has also been the worst one, because I felt in a way that no one could understand, and I couldn't talk to anybody, because no one could understand what I was going through. And not being able to express your feelings when you really need it, it is really hard. I would also like to remind you that even if it seems easy for us, English is not our first language, and we weren't born speaking English. So when we speak with our parents, our friends back at home, we don't speak English. So the classes that we take here are harder, because the teachers don't treat us differently compared to the other students, and it is up to us to work harder in order to equal our classmates and to have good grades. And trust me, it is hard, and it requires a lot of personal work. So these are part of the reasons why, in addition to the one I talked about last month, I think foreign exchange students deserve to participate in the graduation events. Since the beginning of this school year, we participate in all the activities with the class of 2023. We are recognized as seniors of this class. I am part of the class 2023. And the graduation is the last thing that all the class get to experience together. And so that is why I think it is important for me, for the other exchange students, but also for my classmates, that the exchange students participate in the graduation. Now, I know that it is a really sensitive subject, that we all have our own opinion about it, and that we all think we're right, but I will ask you to consider my words, to understand my thoughts, and as an exchange student, and, sorry. It requires a lot of change, I am aware of that, but let's not avoid the subject anymore, and let's actually do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next is, is it Linda Gale?
Board members, I appreciate being here. Just briefly, my name is Linda Gale. I'm an eight-year resident of Amory, so kind of a newbie. I'm a licensed clinical therapist, psychotherapist, practice at a clinic in Minnesota, licensed marriage and family. I'm also a member of Minnesota Coalition of Death Education Services, and been there for about 20 years in practice. I'm not really going to talk about a lot of that, but just by way of background. I am, I read through the policy on 459, and I just am speaking basically on behalf of Clem, that I, I think it's taken, I, I'm very familiar with what families, friends, and so on go through upon a death. And experienced death in my own family, experienced a suicide of a nephew, so I've been down that, that road, as well as the fact that I do a lot of grief counseling, as well as a lot of trauma counseling. I think it is inappropriate to not include the, the name of a student who has died. I think that's disrespectful to the family, but in terms of Clem, I think this is an inappropriate use of a policy. A foreign exchange student, as she, much better than I can do, explained, it's an entirely different situation. So I, I am here speaking on behalf of Clem. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Next is it Rachel Garvin?
Garvis.
All right, thank you.
Hello, school board members. I am Rachel Garvis. I'm a senior at Amory High School. You may know me from Miss Amory Royalty in 2021, 2022. I was also a girl, I am a girl soccer captain, and I'm also kind of throughout the school in extracurricular activities. My parents also hosted a foreign exchange student in 2015, 2016. As you guys know, graduation is coming up in a few months. Not only is that a display of 12 or more years, 12-plus years of work and buildup to our future, it is also a major part for American teens. It is something you share with people you've grown up with and your closest friends. For me personally, though, I can say that I don't have the best relationship with all 12th grade students. And it's, graduation is definitely a display of a connection that I've built with my very close friends, and sharing that moment is just gonna be a really large impact for me. Clementine, this year, has been one of those people, and I felt like I've been able to connect with her in the past few months more than I've been able to connect with people I've grown up with my whole life. As cliche as it sounds, we've, we've talked about life after graduation, friends, emotional struggles, and life goals. She's one of my closest friends. I consider myself very lucky to know her and have been able to share this year with her, which she has had a large impact in. We got to experience homecoming in its full excitement, football games, plenty of basketball and hockey games, and she's taught me a lot about French holidays. We celebrated Epiphany at the beginning of the year, it was really fun. We go skiing weekly, and we're competing in forensics together this week on Thursday with a friend, Megan Wolf. She's also here tonight. We were going to prom together in a group, and I'm currently planning a trip to France to visit her, because I think I'll miss her too much. It is safe to say, she's a meaningful person in my life, not only in high school, but in many years to come. Which leads me to my next point. It is important to me that Clementine is able to walk beside me in the senior class at graduation, not only because she is a big piece, it is a big piece in the American experience, but because this year is important to her as it is to anyone else. It is important to me that I share the experience with one of the, the closest people in my life. As I mentioned before, I was a Miss Amory ambassador. I was able to meet plenty of people and young girls with the same ambition and passion for leadership throughout the summer. And I was able to make bonds and have some really meaningful connections and talk about values with these young women. It was amazing to see these girls at their coronation, supporting a cause, and the girls that were gonna take their places. But because Amory was the last festival of the summer, all of those girls were not able to support us and our candidates. Though I made the best of the coronation, and it was very enjoyable, it felt as though a piece of the experience was missing, and it bothered me that those individuals had not been there and were not able to make it to the final piece. For me, it felt like a very large loss in its value, and I'm worried that the, I feel similar and yet more intense feeling when I talk to Clem about her not being able to walk with me at graduation. It is not an experience that I would like to repeat. Additionally, this lessens the value of walking at graduation, because it feels less important and makes me question the importance and meaning of graduation for the school district, while also making me question if it really means, if it really means anything if I cannot share it with somebody who has done so much for me. And I question if I deserve it myself, because we have learned plenty about the French education system, and I also talked to her about the credit she has earned this past, these past few years, and she has, I, I mean, the list, it's, it's almost double what we require here. It's, it's immense. She has not only passed her high school test a year early, has more than enough credits than required by the school district, but she has also stepped out of her comfort, comfort zone to immerse herself in an American culture. I took some look into other school districts' foreign exchange policies around our area, and I noticed that almost all of them allow their foreign exchange students to walk. Whether they get a diploma or not, they are able to experience that part of an American Why should foreign exchange students choose to stay at Amory, at the school district, when other surrounding schools have more to offer? Something I'd like you to consider is that Amory might be losing a competitive edge when it comes to exchange students. This is really frustrating for me, because I believe that Amory has a lot to offer, and Amory students benefit in multiple ways when meeting people with diverse cultural backgrounds. If I'm not mistaken, this is the, this is not the first time this has come up in the past few years, and I don't believe it will be the last unless action is taken. I want to thank you for your time and hope you truly consider this. Finally, I want to leave you with one question. If your child had been able to go outside their comfort zone to a foreign country for a year, work hard, and make the most out of their, their year, how would you feel if they missed out on such an important experience as graduation? Thank you.
Next, we have Desiree Wisher.
I'm Desiree Wisher. I'm from Amory, and I'm also speaking on behalf of all the foreign exchange students. This policy is very important to get changed, not only for our current foreign exchange students, but our future foreign exchange students, because doesn't everyone remember their graduation? I mean, it's something that you're gonna be able to tell your kids about forever, because it's something that you will not be able to forget. These students have achieved a lot while they've been here or when they've been back at home. Their grades and all of their, like, extracurriculars are, like, a lot more than what we do here, and, like, I know one of them was talking to me about how easy calculus was. That's not what normal American students would say here. This is really important and needs to be talked about tonight and addressed, because it has been dragging on and not being, getting discussed, and if it doesn't get discussed now, it most likely will not get changed in any time near here. If our schools are able to be renovated, and we took the time to do that, why are we not able to change a policy when people are bringing it up and being able to continue to bring it up like this? Other surrounding schools are more than happy to let their foreign exchange students walk. They're proud and provide a special section for them at graduation. These students are not asking for a diploma, they are simply asking for the school to let them walk along their students, or their other classmates that they've been with for nine months. They do not want to be left and forgotten, they want this memory that all of us get to have with them. We aren't just teenagers that are complaining and groaning about some policy or code that the district has. This is showing us, showing what change is needed and how students deserve better than to get sent home, back to their home country, without a proper goodbye while walking for graduation. Graduation is about the class of 2023, not about anything else, not about some script that our school is making for it. And on that day, we believe that our foreign exchange students should be alongside with us, celebrating this big moment in our lives. Thank you.
And now I have David Fraser.
Well, I'm new to Amory. My name's Dave Fraser. Though I did wire a house in 1973 in Amory as an electrician apprentice, that's a long story. I, there, I know everything's gonna be covered, so I'm a, I'm a therapist as well. I'm not licensed yet, almost, but I was a chaplain in the Army for 23 years, active duty reserve. I was a pastor for 30, almost 30 years, and I was a chaplain for a funeral home for 10 years. So I, I know, well, and I also did a video for high school with a 8mm camera. You wanna know about old, old stuff? But the point I'm gonna make is just one, is, is, you know, if, if we knew that a foreign exchange student was going to be a millionaire and donate to our football team, and maybe not this school, but definitely in Texas, you know what's gonna happen, right? We bend the rules, we do whatever it takes, because it, it will help everybody. And yet, if, if you don't have that money, it doesn't change a thing. And we in America pride ourselves that we can walk up and step up to the plate, no matter where we come from, right? And I, and I'll let you know one thing, we're closing, there's a foreign exchange student on our class site, and next year will be our 50th, and I watch and how people relate to this person from 50 years ago, and some of them haven't seen her, but she means a lot. And so I'm just saying that, there's an emotional element to, not just an element of saying, "Hey, let's go this way just because it's right," but also because, it's also good. Good policy. That's all I had to say.
Thank you. And next we have, I mean, Justin Hosking.
I'm Justin Hosking from Amory. I'm gonna do something that you don't see very often. Administrators, Dr. Dürfler, Char, Keith, Dale, Erin, Joe. I'm sorry. I'm genuinely sorry. When I came last time and spoke with you, I said some things that upset a great number of people, things that gave people ill feelings, made us feel bad, and I don't like how it came across. I said some things about some students that was awful, and I am genuinely sorry. It was awful. I should never have done that. Sean, I spoke to you about it on the 23rd, and you pointed out to me, thank you, that I was wrong, and that I was getting in the way of the conversation, and I wrote a letter for you to hand out to a few folks, and I know it got around, and in that letter, I apologized. I said, "I'm sorry. I'm sorry for what I had said." I wanna make it extremely clear that it's unfair to treat students with varying learning disabilities in a difficult, in a bad light. There's students that come from very bad homes, and that it's difficult to work through these things. And I, I really, I do stand with you guys and these students, for those of you who know, I, I've taken a great number of these students out to lunch to spend time with them, to encourage them in their difficult home lives, and, and I've come by to drop stuff off for the kids who have donated enough boots to go on a field trip, or whatever it takes. I, I do stand with you. The part that hurts the most with these students, too, is The part that hurts the most with these students too is when they turn me down, you know, they say, I don't want to have anything to do with you. I don't want to participate with you anymore. I don't want to go out to lunch. I don't want to talk with you. And they, they walk away from me and, and I know what that feels like as, as a teacher too because it hurts. It hurts when you give somebody a lot of great opportunities and they, they turn and they walk, walk away. And I didn't mean to insult you or any of those students by the comment that I made last time. Sorry, Char. I'm sorry that you told me the story about your son and I was touched by that. I was, I was touched by the feeling that it's just not fair. It's just not right. I, I, I don't, I don't like it when students who work hard to achieve something aren't given the opportunity to participate with their cohort. I, I don't like it when I see injustice, when I, when I see the opportunity for, for some kids to walk, but others to not and to have varying degrees of acceptability in terms of who's allowed and who's not allowed to participate in graduation. I mean, the, the DPI says that it's, it's, I'll, I'll read it for you. The DPI says it's a board idea. It's a, it's a board policy that can determine who could participate in the graduation ceremony. That's from document 10.01 from 2010. That's, that's you guys. And, and to wrestle through these things and why it's okay for, for some students, some special ed students to participate with their cohort, even though they're not going to get a diploma for a couple of years later until they graduate by age out of the system. And some students who work hard to get their HSED and not being able to participate. I'm sorry. It just, it just rubs me the wrong way and I, I don't like that injustice. Last time I spoke, you guys wrote a great response back and I appreciate the response that you guys wrote back. In it, you quoted policy 459, which is the policy of why you chose not to allow the students to participate in graduation. And, and I, I'm sorry, but it feels like there's an injustice in that as well from the perspective that what that policy starts off by saying is per district vision and mission, Amory schools are designed to primarily to foster and support student learning in a recognition that the death of a student or staff member deeply impacts the school community. The following guidance must be developed to establish a uniform response in the event of a student or staff member death. In that very introduction, that preamble to that statement, we're given the confines by which that statement is designed to operate. It's not to extend beyond its confines because that becomes reading something into something else. It's not fair. It's not right. And I, I can't help to think that if we understood as a board what was intended in that original document, that it wouldn't have been changed, would have been adapted, would adopted to be something different. I don't think Article 12.8 would be allowed to stand as it is if we knew that was going to be how it was going to be interpreted. The whole idea of death of a student is something that's difficult to process and difficult to work through. The Center for Suicide Prevention says things about that 459 policy and it actually confirms that that's a good way to go, 459. However, it says in its own document that those ideas in 459 are controversial in the best of times, as you heard from these other psychologists here. The American Foundation for Suicide Prevention also agrees with the policies in 459. However, the Center for School Crisis and Bereavement disagrees with the 459 policy. And the AFSB, the Center for Suicide Prevention, also disagrees with it as well. I'm sorry. It's hard. It's, I know it's difficult to work through these things. I'm sorry. I'm, I'm sorry, Aaron. I'm sorry that I didn't include you in the dialogue about what I was going to talk to the board about. I'm sorry that I kind of left you out of this to try to somehow remain, let you remain neutral in these arguments. I knew that we might not end up seeing eye to eye at the end of the day and I'm sorry I couldn't bring you into this. I respect your position and your desire to judge uprightly. Clementine, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm sorry this is a relatively benign subject. This subject has no political leanings in it whatsoever. I didn't think that we would be so easily offended by a subject like this. I didn't realize it would cause so much tension and so much anguish inside of us in the process. Board, Joe? Sorry that the way things are laid out right now, that you can't always bring up stuff that you want to talk about. That doesn't seem right either. I'm sorry for all of this. I've defended the board, your decisions, policies in public. I've supported raising my own taxes in the process. I'm sorry about the misconceptions of how I thought the board was supposed to function. I'm sorry that I might have been wearing rose colored glasses and hoping for just honest dialogue about the whole thing. I'm sorry that this has exposed equity issues among the school, board members, difficulty in accomplishing tasks. I'm sorry. I'm sorry that it's worked out this way. I'd ask you to reconsider. Thank you.
And last one is Joe.
My name's Joe Veerkant, I'm from Blackbrook Township. And after last month's meeting, and by the way, apology accepted, you're forgiven. Like, there's grace here. And, um, wholeheartedly, I mean it, Justin. But from last month's meeting, there were some things that were brought up that I've had hours, I mean, hours upon hours of research and discussion. And there were several things since then, especially in regards to agenda, that I wanted to address. And, and again, I don't think it was Justin's intention, but one was the initial start was the concept of bringing up transgenderism again. And so I went back to 2018 and I watched the board meeting in all, although it is not on the agenda, I've asked and I've received knowledge and guidance from the, the school. And, and not only that, the administrator actually reached out to our attorney firm, Wild Riley, to O'Clare with, on the topic of specific concerns I had received from the public in regards to athletics, locker rooms, showering and our school district's policy. The truth is that even though I don't like hearing it and I don't, I can't necessarily agree with the morality or the results that were based under the case law of Whittaker versus Kenosha, the school district, and from the United States Courts of Appeals, the 7th District. I researched this case and the opinion on the, the court of, from Justia Law, which is a scholarly level legal database that I used in college and I still use today in my profession. And I want to let you know that I agree with Wild Riley based on the current case law from Whittaker versus Kenosha Schools. And again, this comes up and it seems like every time I talk about this, it's like nails on a chalkboard and some will consider it political. But this does need to be reviewed and discussed at times. On top of that, I also did ask if our new, this referendum would assist in some of the changes of the actual physical restrooms, locker rooms and whatnot to assist with this and probably alleviate some of the legality, the legal issues here and liabilities. But again, now after reviewing that, I want to let you know I don't intend to bring this up again. I feel that our policy coincides with the current case law we have that was put down under the appellate court of the 7th District. And again, I'm not an attorney, but I've been in law enforcement for 21 years. So I read the 35 pages of the brief and that's, that's, I believe we're there. So Sean, thank you for doing that. Thank you for putting the time into it. Again, I know it's, it's one of those hot topics no one wants to talk about. Again, last month I also asked for a foreign exchange student participation in graduation to be on the agenda. This did not occur. I've received community complaints and the board has seen all the emails that I've received. I didn't realize that your email went to anyone else. But I've, the problem I have with not having it for discussion in public forum is we're really, right now I'm getting a one-sided story. And I would like to have the, the public know both sides of this story. And where they come from. So lastly, I just want to speak about the agenda. And last month, again, I listened to community comment. I asked things to be put on this month's agenda. And when a school board member, an elected official, who I believe is, you know, the voice of our people in the district, asks for something, I would take it into serious consideration. I understand policy 171.2 states the, the district administrator shall prepare an agenda for each meeting to be approved by the board president or the designated to send a copy along with the necessary background information so each board member receives it prior to the meeting. And that's really where I think we have a difference of opinion in regards to how that states. You're the only two who can place an item on the agenda is what was in the email. I agree that Sean, you, or Dr. Dürfler, you prepare it. President, you approve it. But I don't think it should be up to you to pick and choose what goes on and especially when it's a topic brought up by a, by a board member. I wanted this topic to be an open forum so we don't just get one-sided stories. I want both sides here to be public. And the truth is, is since, since last month, I've had hours of conversation, hours of research into case law. And again, looking at in 2018, when you said legal, where was it coming from? Well, in 2017, this was actually, this was actually through and I'm guessing that this is the actual case you were talking about. So with all due respect, all due respect, when I ask for communication, it's for open discussion so the public can hear truly both sides if there is. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. And next we'll go to our administrative reports.
Josh, you're clearing the room.
First time.
Yeah. Okay, you'll see at the high school, a couple of unique things. We were recognized by the college board for the Female Diversity Award for the number of female participants we had in our AP Computer Science course last year. You know, we've, we've really tried to promote women in the STEM careers and so this was pretty exciting. Mrs. Stevens was the one who taught this course last year and had way more females than males in it, so it was a great thing. ACP, we had our Academic Career Planning Parent Teacher Conference. Just reminded the high school, we do them a little bit differently. We focus on college and career readiness, scheduling for courses. We're at 48%, which, you know, let's just call it 50%. At the high school, to get 50% of the parents, I think it's, it's a pretty good number. We're never going to be at that 90% at, at the elementary and intermediate levels, but 50%, we were pretty happy with the outcome from that. We're currently going through data analysis. Students and their parents met with their warrior time teachers. They now give us information about the courses that they're interested in for next year so that information is getting plugged into the computer system so that we can begin to use that information to see what classes we're going to run and, and then go into our master schedule build. Recently, we're going through National FFA Week activities currently. FFA always puts a lot of fun little activities together and I know they went and did their donut run last Friday as they always do.
Much appreciated from the dairy farmers. Thank you very much.
We've got the, the cow judging contest that's always popular with the staff. I, I put a lot of time and effort into that thing.
Eeny, meeny, miny, moe.
Oh, no. Oh, no. I, I read it every year, make sure I know what I'm looking for and analyze all those pictures.
So you're the winner.
Never. I'm like over 23, I think.
Go to the eeny, meeny, miny, moe.
You're not reading good enough.
I did get the, the chocolate ice cream bucket once for having the worst score of the cow pie. And then a, another number of other organizations are FFA, Forensics, Solo Ensemble, Chess Club and plenty more have had all sorts of success and they're, they're competing nonstop right now. And we can really talk about a lot of these clubs every single week, but just to let you guys know that they're, they're doing some wonderful work, so. Upcoming events, February 22nd, we have our ACT Boot Camp scheduled for grades nine through 11. We've, we've, you know, I think we've really upped our game. This is the first time that we've incorporated ninth and 10th graders into this test prep model for state assessments. I told you last month that we've been doing extra warrior time lessons as well. Part of this is the ninth and 10th graders will be having sessions with myself as well so I can explain to them the importance of state testing, how the scores are tabulated so they understand, you know, and hopefully they can, you know, I'm trying not to, I don't want to make it so they absolutely hate this, but I need them to understand why it's important to give their best effort. So that's something that we're going to try new this year. We're going to bribe them with some incentives, some drawings, you know. We're looking for growth. We're looking for individual student growth because let's face it, we know that Joe and Aaron aren't going to get the same score, but if they both, you know, get the growth that we want, that's what, you know, each, each student is individual and that's what we really want to focus on. We recently had the wrestling sectional here, individual sectional this past Saturday. Great event. We're sending, sending five wrestlers onto the state tournament. I would like to take this time to give a shout out to Todd and Deb Christensen, our custodians, you know, they work this thing every single year and they, they really went above and beyond the call of duty. On Saturday night, I was really frustrated after the event was over. Someone came and got me and said, you got to come and look at the locker rooms and they had just been left a disaster. And a bunch of the wrestling club volunteers, myself, Tracy, Jeff Fern, you know, an extra hour in those locker rooms helping out. And Todd and Deb were like, get out of here, guys. We've got this. And so they just went, they didn't ask for help. I mean, but they went above and beyond. And so just, if you see them, give them a, give them a thumbs up. We got some real big time events coming up this week. We've got Friday night, hopefully, well, we're scheduled to host the boys hockey sectional final. We've got some games tomorrow night that have to be won first, but our hope is that we're playing in the hockey sectional final on Friday night. I hate to do bulletin board material here if someone watches this from another school, but we're hoping for a New Richmond, Amory showdown in that final, but we got to win to get there. We have a girls regional final or regional semifinal that same night. Can't move the girls game because there's a regional final on Saturday. So unfortunately, we're going to have to split our, our fan base. Nothing we can do about it at this point. So they'll more than likely play Northwestern. Boys playoffs next week will be versus Somerset. So girls hockey co-op lost this weekend, so they are out right now. And then you'll see, we've got a number of unaffiliated games that we won't be part of, some basketball sectional finals, semifinals. We've traditionally posted those every single year. The WIA loves us and we love hosting those events. Lastly, for those of you that didn't hear, Mrs. Larson won the 2023 Wisconsin Association of Family and Consuming Science Teacher of the Year. Emily has put together a fabulous program. This goes back almost 20 years from when she started in this district. She has absolutely became like the pinnacle, in my opinion, of what an FCC LA program should look like. Kids flock to this program, as they do a number of our programs. Once again, another thing that doesn't show up on the district report card, you know, the success that kids like this have, but kids are going into careers, you know, directly because of these programs. You can't put a price on that. You can't put a scorecard grade on that. It's a great thing and Mrs. Larson, everything, you know, she deserves all the credit for this and so shout out to Mrs. Larson.
Yeah, thank you. I'm going to stop here, Jessica, because there's a hole in here where we don't have the middle school. And the reason for that is, you know, Tom Benson and his wife were in a car accident. Tom was seriously hurt and he is recovering at home as Lisa is. And I want to say thank you to our staff that are filling that hole right now so that they can rest and get back to here. And so his report, albeit was never great, no.
Always too long.
Yeah. But I, you know, hopefully he's not watching it because laughing is gonna hurt. I got a feeling, but, you know. But, uh, again, thank you and, and our prayers are with Tom, Lisa, and, and the families in that, involved in that. So, thank you, Jessica.
Get well, get well soon and get back here with another boring report.
Yeah.
Thanks, Tom.
Okay, at the intermediate school, Paula and I recently attended a Title I coordinators meeting at CISA XI. So if you recall, this is our first year being a school-wide Title I program versus a targeted program. So along with changing to a school-wide, there's certain criteria that we have to, have to meet each year. So Paula and I had gone to that offering, um, aligned some of the things that we have to do in the upcoming year to continue being a school-wide title program. Kind of allowed, I aligned our, um, plan that we will submit to the DPI. And I guess the next upcoming thing that I would want the community to know about when we nail down a date is we are required to have a spring stakeholder meeting. So we will be getting that on the calendar and hope to share that date with you at our next board meeting. English language arts adoption, we are still talking about it. Teresa Stanley from CISA XI came this past month and actually spent a whole half a day with each grade level. She had done that in the fall, and so we had promised our staff that we would continue professional development, and she came this spring. So during that half day with each grade level, they looked at their pacing, their unit, their themes, their scope and sequence. And they're just starting the work on the standard alignment. So it will be an ongoing process for us. We are really committed to making sure that our teachers have the professional development that they need. We have a great resource in their hands, and now we just need to make sure that we continue to support them. An exciting event that our fourth and fifth grade Montessori students participated in was making dumplings with our high school students. So fourth and fifth grade studied the Chinese New Year. They did a mini unit, and they ended the mini unit by walking over to the high school and made traditional dumplings with the family consumer sciences leadership students. So I want to thank our high school students for welcoming over our Montessori students and helping them and participating in this meaningful activity. Power Up collaborated with the Amory School District and the intermediate school to offer the first annual snowshoe shuffle. So I want to thank Katie Ellison for that and Melissa Hansen of our PE department here. It occurred on Saturday, February eleventh. About twenty-five sets of snowshoes were checked out from our PE department. And then an additional twenty-five snowshoers participated in that event as well. And that had gone through our school forest. So it's wonderful that we are highlighting a huge asset to us, which is our school forest. Fourth grade is kicking off their Iditarod. So they had two presenters come in this past week and had done a presentation on the Iditarod and what that looks like, the pacing of it, the route of it. And now they will begin their research on the Iditarod, and they will be competing in an Iditarid challenge in the next upcoming weeks. It's always a, a fun unit for our, our fourth grade students. As Josh mentioned, we had parent teacher conferences on Monday and Thursday of last week. They were very well attended. We had about a ninety-five percent attendance rate at the intermediate school. Sorry, Josh. And I do want to thank the IPO for providing dinner for us on Monday evening. So thank you for organizing that. Upcoming events, tomorrow night, we have our second annual Love Your Library event. So we're inviting students and their families into our library space. It's one hour. They get to enjoy hot chocolate and a sugar cookie, but then also there's a scavenger hunt in our library, just introducing them to new authors, new themes, new books that we've gotten. And we're also inviting them into our maker's space, which is right next door here, to participate in a challenge that Mrs. Brayton has set up. Report cards go home on March fifteenth, and then no school on March sixteenth, seventeenth, and twentieth. Thank you.
I'd make her confirm the numbers. All right. Paula.
Hello. So at the elementary school, we've been doing a lot of fun activities. One being the high school chess club has graciously come over and helped our second grade students learn how to play chess during their warrior time. This was greatly received on both occasions. Mr. Benzley was excited to see how excited his high school chess players were to teach those young ones how to play chess. So that was really fun to watch. Eighth grade English students held their read aloud within there. So they wrote children's books, and then they came over and they shared those within our, um, school. So that was really exciting, and, and the kids were very excited to, um, meet new friends and share stories with them. Mrs. Peterson in Fayette is extremely excited about how successful the Kids Heart Challenge has been for the American Heart Association and earning money with that. Our PBL, our project-based learning classroom researched national parks and did a presentation amongst that. And our 4K is always looking to do some community building and learning about the community, so they took a trip to the public library. Our entire building went on a fun troll hogging, snow tubing adventure here this last week. Valentine's Day was full of adventure in our building. And then our second graders hit the mark with shoveling snow for a neighbor down the street. Um, so that was really well received, and, and the kids had a great time just sending some love to somebody that needed a little extra shovel help. Some of the things that we've been doing in our building as well as the January twentieth in-service is trauma-sensitive schools, one of our big three. We had a speaker from Delaware come out, Wendy Turner. She's actually a, uh, award-winning second grade teacher. She came out to Wa- Wapo Bible Camp, which we did an offsite. So that was really great to partner with them. So we thank them for their space that they offered. And we had a lot of good team building there, working in that in-service. And then we continued that in February and sixteenth, and we did a lot of PLC work, verticals between buildings, the elementary into the intermediate. And then we also used some of the, um, the, uh, the applied arts from middle school as well. So we did some nice interacting there between the buildings. Our English language arts consultant from CISA, as Jessica mentioned, came and did some more HMH training, so that was fantastic. And our ever continuing referendum planning has been exciting. We're at the really, really exciting time where we can see this all coming together, and we're starting to find some new plans. So, yeah, just a lot of great stuff going on. And I just want to go back and highlight all of those great things that the high school kids do and the middle school kids do, and all, everybody in the buildings when they come in, just build communities amongst the entire districts. It really just lights up those young Amory warriors into what's coming next into their future. Some of our upcoming events is a second grade concert. I'm adding to Josh's knock. We might have to reschedule if the snow flies, but we're hopeful that we can still put our concert on, on February twenty-third in the high school auditorium. And then March third is the end of our trimester. March sixth, we're looking at first grade ocean dive, um, right inside our building at six o'clock. And then, uh, we have no school on sixteen, seventeenth, and twentieth.
The twenty-third is Wednesday. I think you're going to now have to knock harder. I think it's Thursday.
Wait and see.
Thursday.
Yes, Thursday. It is Thursday. That's right.
I'm just still going to have to knock harder than Friday.
Exactly. We've got an idea for, uh, make updates, but.
All right. Good evening. Just a couple of quick updates from, uh, services. One is the ongoing, uh, um, throughout the whole year procedural compliance self-assessment. We're on to step two, so we made some corrections. Um, we're uploading those, sending those to DPI. Um, and those get reviewed, and then we have a, a desk audit. Um, and then a site visit coming up in May and June to, um, reevaluate, um, IEPs that have occurred in the time since the audit occurred. So, um, um, staff are doing great. Um, everyone in our office is, you know, chipping in to make sure that we're, um, you know, just, just trying to accomplish this task. This is an opportunity to learn. I keep telling myself this. Um, and keep telling staff that, but the format of an audit is a painful learning format. So, uh, we will survive, as they say. And, uh, um, yeah, hopefully learn some things along the way and improve some processes. Um, next up, uh, we're scheduling, um, in coordination with the school nurse and DPI. In fact, we're really waiting for final approval through DPI, um, as well as the county. In Arcan training, Arcan's an opioid antagonist. Um, it's a, a nasal administration, uh, being trained in this, um, um, opioid antagonist and would be, uh, letting staff know how to identify, for example, an overdose, how to respond, how to administer an axolone, how to work, how it works, and how to care for somebody afterwards. Just with the increase of a lot of different, um, substances, having, um, in particular fentanyl in them, whether it's, you know, prescription drugs, whether it's street drugs. This is just another worst-case scenario, um, provides our staff with more training to respond in, in the case of a worst-case scenario. Next, occupational therapy training. Um, our OT, we contact, tracked occupational therapy through Cumberland Healthcare, and they presented at one of the most recent, um, elementary school, um, staff meetings on developmental stages of gross and fine motor development. What we're seeing is that there are a lot of students coming in with different skills and different skillsets as they, than they didn't pass. Particularly, there might not be as many kids familiar with cutting skills, um, pasting, those sorts of manipulative hands-on things. And our, our OT has developed, has really noticed this, not just in the school district of Amory, but in districts that they serve, um, throughout. And so it really was just a reminder of what are the common developmental milestones for fine and gross motor? And how can we support kids who may not have as much experience coming in, um, with scissors, for example, or pencils, because we have a lot of kids coming in that are flipping screens and pushing buttons. So it's been a big change over the last, um, ten, fifteen years. So it was good to get, um, her input and some more ideas to how we can explicitly teach fine and gross motor.
Thank you.
That was very well welcomed. She did an awesome job presenting that to our building, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Anything from you?
No, sir.
Good. All right. I didn't mean that, like, good.
Brutal.
Uh, information items. Wait, I don't, I, um, you can't get up until I.
I think they're, I think they're waiting.
I know.
They want to go home.
All right. You're good.
Thank you.
Yes.
Well, I'll start us off. Um, I'm going to take Gary's thunder. Bring good news tonight. I'm busy again. Uh, but first of all, I want to thank Troy Miller and LHB team, all the hard work they've done in the design. George, your director of facilities and your superintendent, Sean, and especially staff, because it just didn't happen like that, right? There's a lot of decisions that get made over the last, not weeks, but months, to have a successful day like this. So a lot of decisions happen, uh, throughout the entire design process to get us to this day to, to good bid. So with that, I'll let Gary give the GMP presentation.
All right. Um, some of this was repetitive from last month when we were here, but, um, so we'll talk about the budget review, the, um, the, the overall referendum budget, the bid process, and the GMP approval. So question, question one did have, um, if you remember, we went to referendum, did have two and a half million dollars in for some building renovations at the elementary school, some, some building code impacts, some finishes, replacing some flooring, some casework. And then there was question two, which was the bigger part of the project that was approved. Um, and that was the addition to accommodate for, um, early childhood. Um, so the bidding process after the, the plans are completed by LHB, we put it out on the street for about three weeks for bidding. Um, we received over fifty, um, competitive bids, um, that were received by, um, for all the trade work. Um, the low bidders were interviewed over the last two weeks. And then a GMP package is created, and that is, um, presented to Sean here, uh, later this week for, um, his review. This is just an example of a typical, of a bid tab, which is, uh, the three different bidders that we, low bids, our bids that we received for the tile work. This is just an example of, we have many of these. Next slide. And then this is just the, the different scopes of work that we, that we had bid out. So we kind of, you know, break them into different pieces, um, um, concrete, masonry, paint, electrical, mechanical. And then next slide. Overall, so, um, the GMP is at, at ten million dollars, which is right on the budget for that pro- project. Overall, I know last time we were here, we were under on the big high school project. Um, we have a little bit of exterior facade work across the, 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 all four buildings that were currently, we have bid out. Everything looks really good there as well. We're just kind of scoping. We need a little more time to scope that, and we'll bring that to Sean as well. So overall, it's a little bit under budget. On, yeah, so we're good. Very good.
So if I, just a question, um, the previous slide had like two and a half million and eight and a half million.
Yep.
So that's like eleven million total.
Yep.
And we're at just over ten million?
So it's a soft.
So when you say a little under budget, I mean, maybe?
Yeah, so some of those are soft costs, but a million-ish old, under budget. And then there's, you know, so the other thing that we're meeting with, with George and Sean is just some of the other priorities that didn't make the cut. I mean, we're, we're lucky enough on the elementary school that we had put some alternates there for, um, moving the administrative offices to the back. So hot water, some hot water piping and, um.
So some other, I want to add some of those things that are in the total budget. We're going into bids like your building permit, your design fees, your loose furniture, things like this.
Okay.
So we, those things still have to be paid for, for design, and the loose furniture, building permits, soil testing, surveys. But right now, these are the competitive hard bids, breaking, does that make sense?
Yeah, okay, all right.
And.
That would be a big part of the delta.
There was that question about the firewall situation too, right? That there was some.
Yeah, so Troy and his team were able to, to get the most economical.
Sprinkler?
Yeah, way, way to do that, so.
What's that?
They agreed with us.
But there's some cost in the negotiation of that, correct? So that kind of figures into this total package as well, so, yes.
Yep, and we have one more package left. We just finished the RFP, and that's for the furniture fixtures and equipment package. So that should go out in about, I think it's two weeks, George. So that package is left to go out yet, so we don't have numbers on that, just a budget.
But what that means is that it's less money coming out of general budget to cover all of that stuff that we can cover with the referendum money, correct?
Yep, all included in that referendum budget, everything.
We're on target.
Bottom line. That's what that is, bottom line.
Good.
And I just want to say thank you to all of our residents and all of the taxpayers for passing this referendum because, you know, especially at the high school, that was absolutely necessary that we, that we do these upgrades and that we do something with that building. And I know that there's a lot to let us talk about, all the taxes and that, the increase and how high people's taxes have gone up this year. And there may have been more than one contributing factor to that. But, um, but we just want to say thank you again to all of our, all of our taxpayers for supporting this last year and, um, and, and hopefully you'll see, you know, even though we maybe won't see a lot of it because it's hidden in this stuff, but it is absolutely necessary that we do something with that high school building, so.
Yeah, and big thanks to Josh and his team. We're already starting to get in, get in his way, but he's been gracious enough to, to let us, let us go on the corners and get stuff ready, so we're, we're, we're.
How about it?
Much needed.
Yes.
Again, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for driving. Drive safe. Break the snow home.
Thank you.
Next, Darren, a report from the Wisconsin Associate School Boards.
Yeah, so I attended the state school board convention in January. And, um, you know, it's, it's really just a, a great convention. There's a lot of great sessions and speakers. I actually attended a session on transgender, um, transgender and the law. I attended a session on combating misinformation in your school district. And the, the general sessions, and I was the delegate to the, um, annual meeting, which I, I, I've only been the delegate a few times, I guess, four times. But, um, this time, we lost quorum at like five-thirty at night, started at one-thirty, and we didn't have enough people to continue, so I had to cancel the rest of the meeting. And the last few things we didn't get to talk about had to be tabled until next year. So, kind of went on very long, um, so people decided to leave. But, uh, I guess I would just really encourage, you know, our board members to, um, think about attending in the future. There's some school districts that take all their board members, and I think that it could be really great time for, um, for learning and team building. And, um, and there was just, yeah, there's a lot of information. I went in and talked to Sean, and sat with him, and talked with him about a lot of the ideas that I had, um, gotten from the convention and would like to continue to work on some of those ideas in the future.
I think it would be, um, great if you could type up some notes, maybe, from what you had and share them with the board.
Yeah, that would be great. I will do that.
Since you went, I hate that somebody goes and then we don't really know what you learned.
There's always information there, always good stuff that's going on.
Yeah.
All right, uh, that's it. Then we'll move on to our achievement gap reduction.
So, yeah, up there you'll see our, um, AGR report or the achievement gap reduction. So how are we looking to try to close that gap with academic, um, performance? And most of these are all the same. So as we go across the grade levels from K through three, that's what we're. three, that's what we're supposed to report through to the DPI. We have a baseline continuous of, we want to look to get everybody above the 30th percentile. That's what we're looking. So, 80% of our students will score at or above the 30th percentile is kind of our goal there. We're using the fast bridge, our district-wide fast bridge in reading and math assessments to help us guide whether or not that is happening. And our strategy is using small class sizes, small group instruction. We're doing some rationales with some professional development for instructors, using some rigorous curriculum, and reducing that class size to, to help increase engagement for students. So, with doing all of that, when we look at our kindergarten, reading currently in their fall benchmarks, so we actually do a fall, winter, spring benchmark with them. We have just recently completed our winter benchmark, but we are reporting just fall, and then we'll do another spring report later on in like June. But in our fall, we are at 79% at or above 30th percentile in our reading for kindergarten. That puts us at 61 students that have met that objective at this point. In math, those students in the early math fast bridge were 87% at or above the 30th percentile, meaning 67, so 67 students have met that objective.
Do you know how many students that is out of? I mean, I could maybe try to do the math, but...
Yes, I don't, I didn't write that down, but yeah, we have about 89 students in kindergarten. I should have wrote that down for you.
Okay.
I did not.
87% is at or above the 30th percentile in math?
79% is at or above for reading, and then 87 for math, yes.
Wow.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, we've got some good things going on. Yeah, so, we've got a lot that have already kind of met that goal for us, so that is good. And then, as we move on in the first grade, first grade, we have reading, same things going on. We're looking for that above 30th percentile for, so there in reading, first grade, 64% were at or above the 30th percentile, which is, that is, 50 students have met that objective. And then, math, 81% at or above the 30th percentile, 64 students have met that. And then, we have reading, second grade, 56% at or above 30th, which is 49 students. And, second grade math, mine is upside down, where did it go? There it goes. Turn it the right way. 70% at or above 30th percentile, 61 students met that objective. Do you want to speak at all towards the third grade, if you want, or you want me to? I can, I can keep going. Third grade reading, 68% of the students tested at or above 30th, and that is 78 students met. And then, in math, third grade, 77% of students tested at or above the 30th, with 89 students being met that objective. So, that is the third graders in, lean in the Maslow program yet, and also hooked in with Jessica's third grade students over here at the intermediate school, so that's two buildings when we talk about third grade.
And these are our Montessori and...
The third, but, yes, yes, all of our students.
And does our goal stay at 80% throughout the year?
Yes.
So, we're, a few of these, we've already met the goal for the year, and so, we should only expect these numbers to go up as the year progresses, right?
Correct. That would be our goal, yes, to continue to...
Have you seen growth with the winter scores? I know you're not reporting them, but...
Yes, and, yes, there are some areas that have been really showing some really good growth. In fact, kindergarten really just did a lot of good phonics and phonemic awareness work over the course of the year so far, and they've really shown some really good growth at those lower levels.
Great.
We still struggling then with reading scores, distance learning with COVID and that.
You know, the gaps are always there, and COVID just perpetuated the gaps that were there.
Correct, yep.
I would say we focus a lot on tier-two interventions with our foundational skills, so that's your skills of learning how to read.
Yeah.
So, we have a lot of different resources. There's new research out there. Teresa Stanley, that's coming from CISA 11 has been a really great guide for us, and some of those new resources that actually goes back and you backfill those gaps. You know, when you get to fourth and fifth grade, there's kind of this saying that the elementary, you learn to read, at the intermediate, you read and learn.
Yeah.
And so, many of our students here at the intermediate school and even at the elementary aren't at that point yet of mastering those foundational skills. So, Teresa Stanley, CISA 11, and even our teachers, huge, you know, credit to them just in how much effort they put in believing in what they do. You know, oftentimes, they're buying books and Googling videos, and, you know, they're actually, WITC in Richmond yesterday, Sunday, had a preview of a showing on foundational skills of reading, and we had several teachers that went and draw on their own to, to see this pre-screening of it. And so, you know, our teachers put a ton of effort, and I think these results are because of them, absolutely.
Yeah, it's really exciting to see them just dig into what their students need and how to get them that.
Go ahead.
And this is the first year that you've started to implement the new reading curriculum, right? So...
Correct.
Lot of learning heard there. Yes. Thank you. Now, we will go on to our action items. We have a construction academy lot bid.
Well, what you see first is supplied to us by Northland Surveying Ed Flannam. I sort of asked him to do this, but there was never any formal get-this-done contract kind of a thing. Just popped into my email. Now, the reason that occurred is Ed has statutory guidelines that he needs to get this to the city in order to be able for us to be ready to hit the ground running with the next house building site. So, what you see, if you could scan down a little bit, Becky, so you can start seeing a little bit, that's Hillcrest, the last lot on Hillcrest before you get up the hill, is ours. The open spot of snowfield land, which will hopefully at some point be dirt and grass field, is ours, and he needed to create a lot there for us, and we need to get that approved by the city. So, that's the first piece of this. But really and truly, while this is on the agenda, we're looking at developing the lots on the other end of the property, which would be what? The southwest corner? And we need to have a plan in order to be able to do that. But in order to survey that much land, we need to put that out for bid. I have no idea who does that kind of work. I know that Ed does, but we'll put that out to bid with your permission, and we can have someone choose to give us a price to do that and then get it done. Because right now, there isn't a road there. As you see with Johnson and what you see with Valley, there's a road there, but the next spot down, there isn't. The city's concern is having just a road with nowhere to turn around is when you have emergency vehicles, and they have just that nowhere to turn around. They get to the end and they can't get back out other than backing. So, we're going to have to have an idea what that looks like in order to know what that looks like for a lot size. We need to have someone come in and do that for us, because it's not just lot size, but it's also all of the utilities that are under the ground that we would never know, but a person that does surveying for a living would. Once the snow melts, they'll do all of that work, because right now, it's not accessible. So, there needs to be a motion by you, if you want to, to have someone do the surveying of the portion that's off of Johnson Street there, and order.
So, this, is this the plan for the next house that will be built next year? We already have that location.
Already have that location.
Right, so, we're making a motion to survey for future.
The other, the other corner.
Yeah.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Joe, motion has been made to put out for bid, and second by Dale.
Right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. We're on our way.
Okay, Josh perhaps is going to help me with this. We thought we had it down. We didn't have it down. So, you look at the screen, focus on March. We originally were looking at, all right, good to go, we're going to do the week of the 11th. Okay, not good to go, because ACT is on the 12th. So, then, we moved it to the week of the 4th. Okay, we're good to go, and then Josh gave me a call, and now, we're not good to go.
Yes, so, the foreign language crew came to me, and they wanted to set their dates. I'm like, yeah, let's get that done. They're going to France and Italy. 35 kids. 25 of them are juniors. About 10 of them are on the girls' basketball team. And sectionals would have been, there's no guarantee that they're going to make it to sectionals, but if we keep spring break where it is, I guarantee you my life on it that they're going to make it to sections. And then, and then, all, so... Long story short, you know, we were going to have them leave three days before spring break to maximize that window, least amount of school time away. By doing that, they miss a potential sectional semifinal game. And I'm like, you know, I started looking at the names, and I realized that it was our entire girls' basketball team. So, that, that's not good. It would be awful to qualify for the sectionals and then not send your team. That, that wouldn't be good. So, here's the deal. If, if we can wait, we can wait and send them, like, on Sunday, the 3rd, which is fine, but then, they're going to miss the ACT. Now, we, we can have them take the makeup date, okay? That, that certainly is an option in April, later down the road. So, this, this isn't a mandatory have-to-do thing. We can work around it. One nice thing that we'd noticed that came out of this, that I should have seen this earlier, based on the number of weeks, this, this would actually be the end of our third term. Like, we would have a logical endpoint in our third term at the high school, so when kids came back from spring break, they would actually be starting brand-new classes. Our trip for the kids, we would leave on the 13th, and then, they would get back and start with their new classes, and they would only, they literally could do their makeup work before they left, which would be a really nice thing for these kids that are traveling abroad, because usually, they come back and they're stressed to the hills and trying to make up work. But we can make it work. The makeup test would be in April, but it, it's not a have-to, but I just wanted to...
Or move spring break to the week of the 18th.
Yeah, if, if we move to the week of spring break back, then, then we don't have, had the issues.
The 29th on the calendar is Good Friday. That's why that's off.
So, do you guys have any questions about that? That whole 11-day stretch with that ACT and the girls' basketball?
Tournament play is wrapped up by the 18th. No matter how far we'd play in anything, we wouldn't have any state tournaments, nothing. That's right around the time spring sports starts.
You have the start of spring sports going on, and those coaches are always frustrated, but it's...
Basketball, basketball, wrestling, hockey, everything is done.
There, there may be, could be a foot of snow on the ground again, and we'd be fighting for gym time as well, so...
So, you, if you're interested in making this change, and we hope it's the last change, you would need to make a motion to do so.
All right. You got it planned out.
I apologize that we didn't see this ahead of time.
Yep, there's lots of things going on.
I think you guys know better what's going on in your buildings than we do, and I think we should take that under advisement, so I'll make a motion to approve the calendar this time as presented.
Second, Joe. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Okay.
I apologize to Tracy Hendrickson. We'll have to post this again on social media.
She laughed already, didn't she?
Oh, she said, Josh, why couldn't you have found this two days earlier?
Poor girl.
Yes. Next, our wonderful spot, donations to the district.
Okay, we have a variety of donations and grants to talk about. We have a $750 donation to assist with student yield balances. That came from the Amory VFW, auxiliary 7929, Amory Women's, Woman's Club, donation of $400 to the Prairie Fire production. That's a little Prairie Farm action right there. Operation Roundup grant, a donation of $1,500 via this, well, it's not a donation, it's a grant in the number, in the amount of 1,500 for the installation of electricity in the school farm animal shed. I'm still working with Excel to see where we bring electricity in from that new home on Hillcrest, because our hope is to have animals there. If we're going to have animals there, we then have to have electricity there. So, that's what we would hope to use this money for. We have a school farm meeting coming up on March 8th to talk about that very thing. St. Croix Valley Orchestra, $100 donation to the Amory Band Program. Wisconsin Credit Union, donation of hats, gloves, mittens, snow pants, and more. We are going to bring to you likely in the month of April, an Angel Fund presentation of all, all the things that we've done with that money. And remember, that money from Angel Fund, not that this is that, but the Angel Fund money is donation specifically for kids in need from our community members, so we would like to share with them what we are giving to our kids. The various buildings have gotten good at filling up shopping carts of staff for kids with that donated money. Our Savior's Lutheran Church, thank you for the donation of hats, mittens, and scarves at the elementary school. And that is it.
I'll make a motion that we accept the donations and grants. With many thanks for our, those donations, and many thanks to our generous community for supporting our schools and our students and our programs.
And a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And a round of applause, please. Next is our personnel items.
Okay, we have new employment contracts for Deborah Bond and Antonio Berger, elementary school paras, Matthew Carey moving from the middle school to computer tech in the, for the district, for the district, Josh Graham's a school counselor at the elementary school, Erica Johnson, clubhouse lead teacher, Emily Schindler, special ed para, and Christina Stack, high school food service.
I'm just going to interrupt real quick, Sean. Antonio Berger should say middle school para educator, so that's a mistake there. Nope.
Okay, first mistake of the year. Last two.
No pressure.
Reassignment of Elizabeth Grohovik from elementary school para to clubhouse lead teacher. Resignations for high school track for Annalise Collins, Carl Granica and JV baseball, Elaine Kahler, elementary school para, and Lindsay Myers, and note that is at the end of the school year for high school English.
Motion to accept those personnel items?
So moved.
Aaron, second?
Second.
Dale, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, no. Okay, motion to go to closed session?
Well, I just have one more thing that I think that should be brought up in open session, and I don't know, you know, where I should bring this up, but I do think that I would like to see us have a discussion on the graduation policy and foreign exchange students, and I think that the community that have heard the public comments, both from last month's meeting and from tonight, deserve to hear a discussion and both sides being presented. And so, I would like to have that on the agenda for next month. And I also think we should probably on the agenda for next month have a discussion about who gets to put things on the agenda, and about our policy, about our policy in regards to that, because it, it doesn't seem that, you know, we should have to sign up for community comments in order to have a discussion about, about topics or to bring them up in open session. And if we don't have them on the, on the agenda, where, you know, we're supposed to talk about what's on the agenda, but if we don't have the ability to put things on the agenda, then we don't have the ability to have a discussion in open session, and we're not supposed to be talking about things outside of...
Which you're doing right now, so I'm not going to respond, okay?
Okay, but I mean, this is open session, and so, that's why I'm bringing this up.
But it's not on the agenda.
But, but that's the problem, is, is we can't communicate, like, again, let's not go into closed session and communicate about this.
You're running down the open meeting rules here. That's, that's our...
We can't discuss it in closed session either.
Don't discuss it in closed session either.
Right. Unless we're talking about personnel, bidding, those kind of items.
Under Wisconsin State statute, yes.
Okay. A motion to go to closed session?[1771.83]